Recording in progress.
Okay, the time is 7:00 PM. On January 23rd, I'll call to order the meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council. The meeting is being aired live and recorded for future broadcasts. Please join me in a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council has not been made aware of the passing of any military veterans, but I would ask that you still join us for a moment of silence to honor all those veterans who have passed. Thank you. The first item of business is the approval of meeting minutes from January 2nd, 2024 Town Council meeting. We can do this with roll call, oh, actually, we have to do roll call vote, right?
Yes.
So Counselor Chase is attending remotely, so we'll do all roll call votes this evening. Debbie, I'd ask you to conduct a roll call vote, or actually, I would entertain a motion to approve.
No move.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? We have none. Debbie, could you guide us through a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Counselor Chase?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor George?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
And Counselor Lindy?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. The motion passes. That concludes item A. Moving on to item B, announcements from the president. Just a quick note, we did have to reschedule last week's Town Council meeting to this week. I did just want to mention and note my appreciation to the councilors for accommodating the time change and to the public as well. There was a mix-up on my part, so if there is questions or confusion about why that moved, feel free to reach out to me. Moving on to item C, proclamations. We do have a proclamation tonight. We have a proclamation for firefighter paramedic David A. McGillis. Let me read that. Whereas David A. McGillis is retiring on January 19th, 2024, as firefighter paramedic of the town of Bridgewater after a successful career in municipal service. And whereas in 2003 firefighter paramedic McGillis joined the town of Bridgewater Fire Department and is now a senior firefighter who has a great, who has been a great mentor to other firefighters in the group and in the department. And whereas in 2007 firefighter paramedic McGillis received special recognition for his outstanding efforts for treating and reviving a two-year-old patient who was the victim of a near drowning incident. And whereas in 2013 firefighter paramedic McGillis received a letter of commendation acknowledging his efforts in assisting with ongoing building maintenance issues. And whereas firefighter paramedic McGillis has a lot of trade and construction experience and possesses an extremely good work ethic. And whereas firefighter paramedic McGillis has specialized training in FEMA introduction to the incident command system, FEMA ICS for single resources and initial accident incidents, and simulator-based emergency driver training on the LE simulator. And whereas firefighter paramedic McGillis is a member of the Bridgewater Fire Department Honor Guard. Whereas upon his retirement firefighter paramedic McGillis will be missed by his colleagues in the town of Bridgewater, but can now enjoy his retirement. Resolved that the Bridgewater Town Council hereby extends their congratulations to firefighter paramedic David A. McGillis for his dedication and service to the town of Bridgewater. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and caused the seal of the town of Bridgewater to be affixed on the 19th day of January 2024. That's the signature that'll accompany this on the official document. So congratulations and thank you to firefighter paramedic McGillis. Moving on to item D, citizen open forum. If anyone from the public would like to speak, we'd invite you to approach the podium. We would ask that you try to keep it to three minutes. When you approach, just state your name and address, and I'll give you a signal at the three-minute mark as we approach it. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tina Larson, 40 Amherst Ave. As chairman of the cultural council, I thought it was appropriate that I give a report. We finished our FY '24, and we had over 50 grant requests and $50,000 in requests. We don't get that much money from the state. We only get $22,000. So we selected 17 of the most applicable to the town benefit. I do have a list of all the grants that were given, but I'll give you some highlights here. One of them was to, which direction is the center? The lights? We funded that for next year, not completely, but we gave a grant for that. And the library has a lot of children's programs. The senior center has some adult programs. We are also funding the Music Alley again for this summer. So hopefully, you guys will take advantage of the programs that are there on Thursday nights through the summer. And I believe they'll be doing Black Hat again, because that was the most convenient for them. All right. Does anybody want the list?
Yeah, it would be great. And I would also say, if you would like more time to come back and do an additional update, just let us know. We'd love to have it on the formal agenda.
Nope, that's it. This year, we're done.
Perfect. Well, then, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I'm not done.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So secondly, the reason I'm standing here is that I have pulled papers to run for town clerk. So Mary Lee has really big shoes to fill. I'm hoping that it's a nice, smooth transition and that she has a very easy transition into her own retirement. And then lastly, when I dropped off my signature papers in this building yesterday at noontime, there were zero parking spaces. I parked illegally, ran in to do my stuff, and then came back out and noticed that there were five municipal cars parked in the parking lot. And my friend, who was a former board of assessor, Marge Callahan, I don't know if any of you guys remember her, she was trying to drop cookies off at the assessor's office as a thank you and has tried several times, never could find a parking space. So I don't know who is supposed to institute the no employees in the parking lot, but that needs to be put back into place, because it's very difficult to try to do any kind of town business when you can't find a place to park. All right. So thank you for your time, and I will, if you want me to talk more about the cultural council, later time I can.
Great.
But it's all on the town, not the town, the state website, the Massachusetts Cultural Council. So who would like this? One copy?
I could take it, and I'll make sure that we get copies distributed.
And I have a copy of just the grants.
Both, actually, would be great.
So that's in there, too.
Okay.
This is just the grants. Is there anything else? Just the grants.
I'll take it. And I'll make sure, we'll make sure that all the councilors get it.
And I have a copy as well.
Oh, okay.
That's what's came off the state website, and this was just a compilation of those.
Great. Thank you.
And we are always looking for new members of the cultural council. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to speak?
Frank Souza, 596 Main Street. Knowing that a vets agent has recovered from his injuries posturally, but has retired, I, one person, today I am wearing two hair and aids, which would have cost me over $5,000. I got it only because he called me and said the rules had changed and helped me do all the paperwork. In the past, National Guard and Army Reserve members like myself, I did 22 years, never served 180 consecutive days. Because of that, we were never eligible for VA benefits. That was changed not too long ago, about a year and a half, two years ago. Okay? And Roderick, because he keeps up on all of that stuff, he called me up and said, Frank, you've got to come in, we've got to work with you, and he did it. Well, not only did he help me in that way, but he's helped many other vets in town. And what some people don't know is, he may not be in his office after his hours, but he would go to the homes of the senior veterans, and he would help them and their family getting some of their benefits and stuff. We all know that medications are very, very expensive. A lot of the veterans were eligible to get their medications from VA, they're very low price, but they didn't know that they could, they didn't know how to do it, and he would be out there helping them. Why I'm saying this is I want to thank him for all his great service he gave, but he was a part-time employee, working more than part-time hours. And in the future, going forward, we, the city of Bridgewater, needs a full-time vets agent. And that's what I am asking this town to consider, putting in a full-time vets agent, because we can't expect the new part-timer to do what Roderick did. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public care to speak?
Would you like to hear what's going on with the veteran service?
Great. I believe that's on the agenda item under the town manager update, so we should hear that. Okay. Seeing nobody else from the public, we'll close citizen open forum and move ahead to item E, appointments. We have two this evening. Veterans Council, we have Jonathan Algren for a term from 2024 through 2027. I would entertain a motion to approve.
No move.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Debbie, if you could help us with the roll call vote.
Sure. Counselor Lindy?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor George?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
And Counselor Chase?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
The motion passes. Moving on to item B, Veterans Council, Lisa Bazell Curley, also for the term of 2024 through 2027. I would entertain a motion to approve.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? If we could move to a roll call vote?
Counselor Chase?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor George?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
And Counselor Lindy?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Great. The motion passes. We'd like to thank Jonathan and Lisa for volunteering. That closes item E. Moving on to item F, hearings. We have no hearings this evening. Item G, license transactions. We have no license transactions this evening. Item H, presentations. We have no presentations this evening. Item I, town manager's report. We do have quite a few items for the town manager, so I'd invite him to take the full list in order, starting with item A, vision to reality update.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President, and let me, let me begin by making sure that this works. There we go. Actually, hold on. All right. All right. So vision to reality update, I just wanted to let the council know what's going on. I think several of the councilors had asked for an update on where we are with vision to reality. Bob really couldn't be here tonight. He had a conflict, so I am doing this, which is fine, because it's my initiative, so I want to make sure that you hear it from me. One of the things that I do want to point out before I get started, I only have five slides, so don't worry. One of the things I do want to point out is that many of the, really, the vision to reality is made up of a number of different initiatives. And all of these initiatives combined, obviously, we've labeled vision to reality, but there are a bunch of different projects underneath that, and I'll go through those in a minute. One of the things I do want to sort of reset, maybe, the, either the expectations or the, give a little bit more guidance on the process. So a lot of these different components require a lot of time. So when I say long-term to the council or to the public, I'm talking about years. I'm not talking about 12 months or six months, I'm talking about years. And so really, the, the objective of the vision to reality concept is to position the town for appropriate community development and growth over the course of a generation or two generations or three generations. So it's really an important initiative, so I want to give it that context before I kind of get into some of the details. So let me just, I'm going to talk about very basically the town, Town Council adopted goals, downtown redevelopment, different components of downtown redevelopment, and then give you an idea of how we track progress on, on some of those. And then I'll just say it's over, and that'll be the closing. So back in, in, I guess it was 20, early 2023, the council voted to establish town goals. Among those was to approve a strategy for revitalizing the downtown. This is the strategy for revitalizing downtown, and vision to reality is that. You recall when Bob presented at public forums and also in front of the council, he mentioned these eight different components of downtown redevelopment. Housing, job creation, small business support, economic development, infrastructure redevelopment, historic preservation, pedestrian safety and transportation. So those eight sort of different general components, only a couple of those things can we effectively control ourselves as a town and a town council. Housing, we can, we can control through zoning, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. Job creation, we, we really can't create jobs ourselves, but we can create an environment in which jobs, more jobs, more quality jobs are created. Small business development, same thing. We can create an environment where small businesses is supported and small businesses developed. Sort of hand-in-hand with economic development, there's nothing we can do very directly to achieve economic development, but we can set the table and set the rules around that. Infrastructure is some, one of the few that we can do something directly about. That's an obligation and a responsibility for the town to, to provide clean water and to provide effective waste management, sewer management specifically. Historic preservation, we can be sensitive, and through our zoning, we can be sensitive to the historic structures in our downtown area. Pedestrian safety is another one of those items which we can more directly control by how we lay out our streets and how we lay out our parking and so forth. And then finally, transportation, again, is something that is probably somewhere in the middle of, of, of that spectrum. We can, we can certainly, with our rules and our, and our asks of private developers, we can make sure that we've got an effective transportation system, whether that's through private, private entities or public entities such as BAT or the MBTA. So the, those eight sort of concepts, we have broken down into 12 different projects, and we call them active projects. We've implemented a system which tracks, essentially, a project management system which tracks our progress on any number of these different items. And, and just very quickly to scroll through them. BSU cybersecurity, we've talked a lot about doing, marching in unison with BSU cybersecurity, new cybersecurity program. The university, the state, the Mass Technology Council has invested an enormous amount of money, as have the feds, an enormous amount of money in BSU's cyber program, and that, that is one piece that we want to make sure is, is a very clear part of our sort of overall economic development, job creation goal. Excuse me. That cybersecurity range that the, the university has constructed over the last few years, set to have a ribbon cutting, I believe it's February 9th. So, so once that is done, we'll be working very closely with BSU to track where their students are going after graduation. Obviously, their bachelor's program will be a four-year degree. I don't think it's been approved yet by the State Board of Higher Ed, but, but they expect it will be. But obviously, we'll be tracking their graduates and, and trying to create an environment where they can stay local and start businesses, and, and we can sort of stimulate that sort of business, those sorts of businesses in Bridgewater. Second project, Central Square parking improvements. This incorporates a number of different possibilities. Private parking, coordinating private parking so that we can possibly have public parking on private lots, as well as the potential for a parking garage on what exists now is, as we all know, is the town parking lot in the back side of the east side of Central Square. That, currently, we are in active discussions with Bridgewater State, developing a plan to assess what their needs are in terms of, of parking garage on this side of, on this side of their campus. And we'll continue to have those discussions and have a discussion with State College. The State College, I think it's called the State College Facilities Authority. I can't quite remember the name, but it's a funding mechanism, and we'll continue. I have discussions there. Central Square traffic configuration. The Old Colony Planning Council has, has released their Route 18 corridor study and is endorsing the concept that we have floated with Old Colony about Central Square, which would, would, we think, improve traffic circulation and certainly not with an eye towards pedestrian, pedestrian, making the whole thing pedestrian, much more pedestrian-friendly than it currently is. So that is, that stands now with the Downtown Committee, the council's Downtown Committee, and we'll be looking to get a resolution endorsed by the Downtown Committee to come back to the council for council approval sometime over the next month. So that's, that's coming to your desk as well. Community outreach, we continue to use a number of different social media outlets, as well as in-person events to, to spread the word on, on both vision to reality and the different projects that are associated with the, the vision to reality concept. We have most recently had a really good workshop on digital marketing, which was quite well-attended, and, and we will continue to have more of those, as well as a number of consistent coffee hours at various locations. And, and we continue to reach out individually to folks who, who we think should know about what, what we're doing in that regard, in the, in terms of vision to reality overall. The Form-Based Code is in front of CED, Community and Economic Development Committee right now, and has gone through a joint meeting, a couple of joint meetings, or at least a joint, one joint meeting and a planning board meeting. Planning Board has endorsed the Form-Based Code, and, and that will be coming to you fairly shortly. The MBTA platform move is in early stages, and when I mention long-term, this is one of those areas, one of those projects that is long-term. This is a long-term proposition. Something crazy might happen, and it might accelerate, but, but we are looking at a number of years to make this happen. And a lot of, all of these items on the project list require a lot of discussion on, on many different levels, whether it's private conversations, whether it's federal grant funding level, or whether it's state grant funding levels. Platform move in particular is probably a conversation with three different state organizations, state agencies, which is a task in and of itself, but also includes private developers and, and the mitigations that we might be asking of private developers in order to fund any platform move. So those discussions are underway. Old Town Hall, I think we talked about that last meeting, the Old Town Hall, Townhouse redevelopment is awaiting simply a recommendation from the committee, and we'll bring that, that recommendation back to the council for discussion and, and some sort of resolution that will allow us to go back out and look for proper funding at state and federal grant opportunities there. Private property redevelopment, as you know, Bob has had a number of conversations with private developers on any number of different potentially available or available parcels. We will continue to have those. Once the Form-Based Code gets through the council and passes, we'll have a pamphlet that will go out to private property or private developers, quality developers that we would actually entertain and want in, in town. So, so that is in process as well. Important, two important, critically important pieces for us, almost gating items, if you will, are sewer capacity and water capacity. Those are two separate projects, and I'll talk a little bit more about sewer issues in my update. But we, excuse me, we are working quite closely with our engineers on both water and sewer side to increase our, in the case of sewer, increase our discharge amounts and also seek an alternate source of treatment, potentially at the Department of Correction. We've had several meetings with the Department of Correction, and now it's time to engage our, our local state rep and state senator in those discussions. And similarly, on the water issues, our engineers have worked very hard to, to get us to the point where we can request an increase in water capacity, replace two of our, excuse me, replace two of our existing wells and, and also develop the Vernon Street well. So those are, those are, again, similar to the MBTA platform move. Those are laborious, long, long timeline items, and, and we'll step through those as quickly as we can, but they are by, by nature and by design, very slow, slow processes. In any event, just to give you an idea, you can't see this very well, but within the tracking program are milestones and, and certain pieces that, that are reminders to those that are assigned certain tasks under, under this, under each of those projects. This one happens to show me as the assignee for everything. That's, that's because we're in the early stages of, of fitting this out. But once we get it fitted out, the council will have access to this so that you can see at any given time, you know, what our next steps are in terms of the process. So this is just the two projects listed here, Central Square Traffic Configuration and the MBT Platform Move, give you an idea, sort of a very quick idea of some of the, the challenges that we have as we move through, through these, these two projects. So in terms of continual, you know, continued council committee involvement, budget and finance obviously will play a bigger role as, as we look at mitigation agreements with developers. The CED is going to play a critical role in approving resolutions regarding a number of different items, but potentially MBTA Platform Move and, and the reconfiguration of the downtown, once that gets out of Downtown Committee and back up to, to the council. Downtown Revitalization Committee has been meeting on traffic circulation, and as I mentioned, we'll have a recommendation coming from them. And then I expect strategic planning to take the more long-term view and decide, you know, which, which of those projects and other projects that I've listed are going to deserve priority attention from staff. In terms of, you know, what we're doing, both Bob and I finalizing the Form-Based Code. Grant funding, it's, it's an easy two words to say, but, but there is such a myriad of federal funding opportunities and state funding opportunities that, that chews up what will be a good, probably a majority of my time and a good chunk of Bob's time as well. Mitigation Plan, and, and when I say mitigation plan, I mean, we'll be looking to develop a consistency of mitigation requests among people that want to come in and develop, whether it's mitigation in terms of number of housing units and commercial units, or, or some other gauge, square footage of, of property. We're not exactly sure yet, but- We're not exactly sure yet, but, but we'll be doing the mitigation planning to, to develop a plan to get us the mitigation funds that we need to make a lot of the improvements, both MBTA Platform Move, certainly sewer and water needs the highest among, among the, the needs. And then just massive amounts of community education. I think in your day-to-day, as you're talking to people, the number of people that don't really have any idea of what this vision to reality is, is, is a good chance for us to just educate, 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 and explain to people what it's not, as well as, as what it really is and how important it is to the future. One of the things that I, I should have mentioned early on is that, is why this vision to reality is important. Vision to reality is important because it's, it's our response in some ways to the MBTA Communities Law, which requires a certain amount of, of housing units within a certain radius of, of the MBTA facility. I, I tell people, and I equate it to the, the 40B law. The 40B law was passed, there were towns that said, okay, we're going to be proactive about accomplishing our, our required 10% of affordability, and, and they went into it and they secured their 10% affordability based on what they wanted to see, very similar to what we're trying to do with, with the MBTA Communities Law and the Form-Based Code. The smart towns, the smart cities went and they said, okay, here's what we want to see in terms of 40B development. And there were many towns that actually permitted and then sold a project on, on, excuse me, town property or city property as, as a way to spur that kind of development. Towns that were not particularly proactive sat back and either didn't do anything, or worse, said, we're not going to follow any of that law. Well, you can't not follow state law because there are going to be serious ramifications there. But I, I look at vision to reality as being able to shape within the constraints that we are provided by the law, and there are constraints, you know, it's not a law we ask for, but we have to abide by it. Within those constraints, we want to make sure that whatever we do is what the people in Bridgewater want to see five years from now, 10 years from now, 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now. We don't want to be sitting back and doing nothing so that the developments that come in are not what, what we want to see. So, so that's sort of, that's sort of overarching sort of concept is what, what we're trying to achieve with vision, vision to reality. We want to be proactive about what we want to see and not reactive and, and being stuck, not qualifying for state funding, and that, which would be, you know, incredibly detrimental to us, as I'll point out when we have the sewer discussion. So that is, that's very basically what I wanted to say, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have, let me take my stuff. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for the Town Manager? Counselor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the update. I know it's been a couple of months since, since we had the update from Mr. Rulie. His last update, and I know you mentioned it in, in your presentation, he specifically talked about that there have been some serious inquiries into the Broad Street friendly area. Can you give us, can you give me a little more information as to how that's going? Is it, is the town talking to these potential developers, or is the, where's the owner of the property on this? Because obviously, you know, we don't own the property yet.
Exactly. And actually, that's a good point, you know, we don't, one of those things that we don't actually do is build stuff, unless it's a fire station or, or a sewer system or so forth. It is owned by a private developer, the private, or a private owner, I should say, the private owner does have that property on the market, and to the extent that we get involved or, or talk to people, it's because a developer, a private developer, developer will want to come in and, and know what that they can actually do with the property. So, so we've had five or six different development teams coming in, looking at what they could currently do with the property, and then, and then we explain what they could do with the property once, once the Form-Based Code gets approved. So that's, that's sort of our role. Our understanding is that there have been very serious inquiries and, but I don't, don't know the, the exact status of, of that property right now.
So some of the items on your presentation, I, I do think that, you know, obviously we don't have to wait years for some of them. Like, I know the Downtown Revitalization will come back with a proposal regarding traffic configuration. I'm interested to see what that is. But I also know that there was some grant money that was going to be asked for, for businesses downtown to be able to update their facade and make it look a little better. How, how is that? Is that in the works as well?
That application is in the works for Community Development Block Grants, and it's a program that's funded from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. And that, that application, I believe, is due sometime this month, and it probably will be several months before we know if we've, we've gotten that.
And I do think the, the Old Town Hall restoration project, you know, I'd like to see, you know, I don't know, you've got a capital plan coming to us soon, and I hope that at least some of these things are in there, the, the mobile station, you know, reuse purpose of that, I mean, that's something we can do. And I don't think we, I hope we don't have to wait 50 years for that, because I know I won't be around then. But there are some things, I think, that can be done within, you know, a year or two on, on that list. So, but I do think, and I will say this, after attending the Mass Municipal Conference this past weekend, you know, the Form-Based Code, you know, ordinance that we're, we've got in front of, I think it's in committee now, you're right, I think that we're ahead of the game, and I think we're doing the right thing, because I know the towns that are going to resist that are going to pay a penalty for that, and they're going to, but I think so, I think we're doing the right thing. I know we have a lot on our plate, but I, I think that some of these things I'd like to see move a little faster. Obviously, some things are going to take years, and I'll probably never see them, but that's, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any, Counselor Lindy?
Yes, through you to the Town Manager. Thank you for the presentation, good, good update on all of that. I just wanted to ask a question, when we were talking about the Town Hall, the Old Town Hall, the Town House, you said we were waiting for a recommendation from the committee? Last meeting when Mary Lee was here, I thought we were waiting for an archivist. So I'm confused.
Well, it's, so they're two, they're two completely sort of separate things. What I'd asked the committee to do is develop, based upon the feasibility study that we had commissioned in 2021, I had asked the committee to, to lay out what they saw as the reasonably sustainable and, and best use for that building, and whether or not, you know, that included a component of, with the university, you know, programming component with the university. So, so that is, that is something I think the committee is, is still working on. The, the other piece is much more, really, somewhat unconnected, well, completely disconnected from that piece. It was a much more practical piece about, you know, just how can we, how can we begin to, to pare down the, the documents that are stored over there? And, and we have hired an archivist, so I'm happy to report, so.
Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Dutton, thank you for the update. I know I've been one of the counselors that's been pretty consistent in, in requesting kind of what's next. So clearly, these are very large areas, just the, the top eight over here that you listed out, and then these 12 projects. I think one thing that would be helpful that, trying to get my head around is, because these are very, very disparate rails of focus, and then to your point, you know, some of them are things that we don't always have control over, there's so many variables, and then there's some others like infrastructure, historic preservation, pedestrian safety that you mentioned, that we might be able to have a little bit more direct control over. I think one of the things that would be helpful is kind of understanding, we've got these big priorities, there's these 12 different projects. I think it would be helpful to kind of understand which projects are, you, you know, what are you trying to accomplish with each of those, right? These, all of them sound very, very necessary, so it's not a matter of that, right? But sort of the, what ultimately are we trying to achieve, right? So it's like, as I look at number one, cybersecurity, so it sounds like the undergraduate program has not been approved yet, so it's not live out in the, in the sphere for students to start taking that course or that program. So, you know, what is our role then? Is this just a matter of like, we're keeping in touch? And you don't have to answer that right now, but, you know, it's just sort of like understanding a little bit more meat behind what some of these are, and then the timing, because of, you know, we do throw things like that out, and we have said things to the community around like, oh, we're doing, we're working this, and everyone's like, okay, great, so what's happening, right? I wonder if we need to be a little bit more intentional about like, well, yes, these are ideas and things that people are working on, but we do also need to be able to share, set expectations about reality of when things may, may or may not come to fruition. So first, I think the first point is, what is, what are we trying to get to? You know, to me, that one feels like a combination of jobs and economic development, so, okay, fine. And then the second part is sort of like, okay, so then what's that plan around that? Like, what's our role? What are we trying to achieve, and what's the timing? And I would say that probably applies to everything here, that it would be helpful to, you know, just saying we're going to work on jobs isn't the goal, like, what is our goal within that, right? And, and then seeing how these, these projects map up, I think would be helpful to understand. One question I was curious about was also on small business support. For these events that we've been hosting, are we seeing good turnout from current businesses within Bridgewater? Are we looking to like, maybe get like the word out, like, oh, hey, Bridgewater's trying to be friendly because, you know, maybe I'm leading the witness here, but we're just trying to show that we're friendly so that like, we have these resources available, so maybe other businesses may be like, you know what, I want to keep an eye on Bridgewater, maybe I'm going to open up my next storefront there, or, you know, I, my lease is up here, so I want to move there. Is that kind of the intent?
I think, I think it's probably partially that. We want to make sure, I think for, the reputation Bridgewater has is, for, for a number of years has been that we're business unfriendly. And I think we're trying very hard to make sure that people understand that we're not. And I think the Form-Based Code will go a pretty long way in showing people that we're not business unfriendly. We're going to figure out a way so that you can build what you want to build, as long as we want to see what you want to build, we can do that fairly quickly. The business, the business, you know, sort of those educational programs have, have, the ones I've been to have been pretty well-attended, probably 10, 12 business owners, not all brick-and-mortar business owners, you know, some folks that, that work virtually, you know, they might work out of their house, but they've been, they've been pretty well-attended and well-received, so, so I'm encouraged by that. But I do think it's, it's, as I say, it's sort of a two-pronged thing. It helps our existing businesses, but it's also a bit of a recruitment tool to show that, you know, we're not necessarily business unfriendly, and, and that's the picture that's been painted over the years, so, so we want to try to change that because we don't think it's true.
Yeah. Okay. And then my last question is, you know, this is helpful seeing, you know, I feel like I've heard little bits and pieces sprinkled, but seeing this is sort of like, these are our, you know, outlined focus areas, we've got these 12 discrete projects, which of course have tentacles underneath. This is really helpful to see that. I do, I kind of have been thinking lately around, we, we, we created so much hype and interest initially, right? And I don't mean to sound like a, a naysayer here, but I'm like, did we go out a little too early? You know what I mean? Especially like, we don't, you know, you're saying some of these things that are large contingencies around this, you know, Broad, Broad Street Plaza redevelopment is, could be, is it five years? Is it 10 years? Is it 15? Did we go out a little bit too early in terms of the hype? I know we have to educate because, you know, we had public hearings, et cetera, and that's part of the process, but in terms of the, the hyping around it, do you get what I mean?
Not being the marketing expert, I would say that you probably have a pretty good, probably have a better gauge than I do, but I, you could say that I think we, we sort of hyped it, if you want to use that word, a little too early because, or we, maybe didn't hype it too early, maybe we didn't, weren't clear about the, the results, what our expected results would be and the timeline for expected results, and, and we, we should have done that a lot better. I will, I will grant you that.
Good. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Okay. I just have a, maybe a few comments and questions. I think to the, to the hype piece, I have a slightly different perspective, and maybe if you could just sort of provide a reaction to it. I think one of the key things with a project this big, and this is huge, right? I mean, just the list that you showed, plus all the other things that are going to pop up, it is the probably most complicated thing the town has ever done, a lot of dependencies, a lot of sequencing. I think it's important to make sure that we've got the support and alignment of the community before we start pushing some of those balls forward. And I, I agree that I, I think we have a lot of work to do actually to talk about the timeline, so people know what's first, what's next, what's later, you know, it's a 20-year project, or it's a two-week project. I think there's a lot of confusion on that. But I do like the, the fact that we are trying to do anything we can to get those people who care, you know, to show up and share their thoughts, so that we, we start rolling the balls at least kind of in the right direction and one that's supported. And so I do, I do agree, I think it's, and I'm also not a marketing person, but finding the right way to balance, you know, getting enough interest that we get good feedback with too much interest where we, we sort of get a disconnect from like the message and the reality. And I, and I think to help with that, I do really like the idea of the timeline, and even if we don't know the dates, we certainly know what needs to come before, like, we need the sewer before we can, you know, kind of show up with the buildings. So I think even just on a timeline, if it's not like this year, it's like, hey, first we're tackling these things, and then those things, and then these things are at the end, you know? I think that would be really helpful. And then just my last comment on it is, I think it's implied, you didn't specifically say it, but a project like this requires somebody at the state level to say it's, to also say it's a great idea and help us navigate all the grants and everything you talked about. So I just want to make sure that as we're assigning names, you know, we're finding people at the state level to sign up and kind of help us with that. And I would also encourage the, the public to reach out to your representatives at the state level and let them know what you care about, so they can help us. Any other comments? Okay. We could go ahead and move on to item B, Winter Street Drainage Update.
Winter Street, I think as the Council knows, was scheduled to be done this fall, this past fall. It did not get done this past fall, and that delay was caused by significant road layout discrepancies, and meaning that the actual, the actual road was complete, well, not completely, but strayed from the road layout. And so our engineering department went to work on that and engineered a revised plan that showed the road within the road layout, and so that has all been approved, that's been approved by Mass DOT as well, and so construction on, on that part of Winter Street should begin in early spring. It is Chapter 90 funded, we've set aside those Chapter 90 funds to, to, to do that particular road, and again, construction should start in early spring. So happy to answer a question about that one.
Any questions for the Town Manager on that one? Counselor Robinson?
Sorry, I, I'm not sure I understood that it was caused by road layout discrepancies. So, yeah.
So, I'm sorry. So the road, the road actually ended up on, good chunks of it ended up on private property, and so for whatever reason, it's been that way for hundreds of years. And so in order for us to, to do the work, we either had to go out and, and do a taking of all the part, all the pieces where the road strayed from the, from the, the road layout, or, and re-engineer- layout, or, and re-engineer the road so that it went within the road layout. And what, what we decided to do was just put the road where it needs to go, where it should have gone in the first place.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. Gotcha. Thank you.
And then just maybe two quick follow-up questions. This is an area, I think that we've talked about a bunch of times, we've had people come and approach the council, I think you also. I just wonder, for the residents that live on that street, have we communicated any of this to them? Do they know kind of what to expect there?
I know we communicated a delay to the residents, and, and our standard practice is, right before construction is set to begin, we notify the residents that will be impacted, usually do it with a, a door-to-door sort of door hanger, and I assume that they'll do the same thing, just to make sure that residents know that there'll be a disruption for a period of time.
Great. Thanks. And then you also said construction should begin in the spring. What, what, what would prevent that from happening? Like, what, what's keeping that as a should versus a will?
Weather. Weather plays an important part of that. So to the extent that we have fairly good weather, work will, will begin. Contractor delays, which are usually associated with weather, also can potentially impact that.
Great.
But we have a contractor on board, so it's, it's really going to be weather-dependent.
And then just to confirm, this is the stretch of Winter Street, sort of from that Dunkin' Donuts over to Conan?
Correct.
So heading towards that side.
Correct.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Yep.
No other questions? We can move on to item C, Water Street Tire Issue Update.
Yes. Councilor George has, and I have been working or communicating with a resident over the past couple of years, on the resident's concern that there's a fairly sizable tire dump on, on a piece of private property on the, sort of the backside of Great Hill off of Water Street. The fire department assessed the pile, it's about 50 to 7, they believe it's about 50 to 75 yards long, about 15 to 20 yards wide, and about 15 to 20 feet tall. It's likely been there for a very long time, based on the size of trees that are growing out of it. So it's, this is certainly nothing new. We had looked at a number of different places for grant funding to try to spearhead a cleanup. It's complicated by the fact that we don't own the property, and so we did look for privately accessible, funds that were privately accessible, state funds that, that might have been privately accessible. At one time, the property owners could have applied to the Plymouth County Mosquito Board for a grant that, that would have helped clean up the tires and gotten them out of there. That program ended a number of years ago. The Department of Environmental Protection also has no current funding opportunities for those kinds of remediations. And as far as we can tell, no other state agency has any kind of active grant that's privately accessible. So that is kind of where it stands. I will point out that, that the town does have an existing ordinance, which actually allows tire dumps, such as this one. And, and not only that, it also requires the use of herbicides to combat any kind of plant growth. Clearly, it doesn't appear that any owner has used herbicides on this tire dump, and that's, you could say that might be a good thing, but, but I do think if, while we continue to try to find a way for this particular private owner to clean up this dump, I do think it would be incumbent on the council to take up a revision to that, to that ordinance, which, which allows tire dumps on, on private properties. I don't, I don't believe there's anybody right now actively starting up a tire dump. So that, that's an ordinance that, that probably should be changed, and we probably should not be mandating the use of herbicides, especially in our areas of contribution to, to our well water, which is, this is not, but, but we shouldn't, shouldn't be allowing that. So that's, that's about what I have at this point, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Great. Thanks. Councilor George?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the town manager. So I, I'm aware of the ordinance and understand it, but if we deem that there is a public health hazard within that property, regardless of an ordinance, wouldn't we be able to compel the property owners to take due course and bring it into not only the ordinance, but also whatever we, whatever is determined that the public health hazard is in existence?
If, I think, I think you'd have a stronger case there, and, and town attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you'd have a stronger case there if you actually had an ordinance and/or Board of Health regulations, which basically said, yeah, you can, the, the Board of Health can declare a public health hazard based on, on a tire dump. And that's not something we currently have.
What about the DEP?
DEP, surprisingly, you know, in my conversations with them, that's a local issue, according to them.
According to them?
According to them.
So what, a tire dump is a local issue and not the DEP?
Mm-hmm. We had another tire dump not too far away on, off of Plymouth Street, and the property owner went through a permitting process to build, I think duplexes on the property. And as part of the, that process, the planning board, or actually, this was the ZBA, could compel them to clean up the tire dump, but that was part of the ZBA permitting process. But there's nothing right now in our regulations or in our ordinance which allows us to compel cleanup. But I, I do think that if we went the public health route, first we should change our, our ordinance and promulgate Board of Health regulations as well.
I, I've got to admit, I'm very shocked at the state level, which overrides my understanding, a local ordinance wouldn't be able to use to compel, at least to bring that property into some sort of situation where it's not potential, I mean, right now, it sounds like we have to prove it's a public, it's, it is developed into a public hazard before we can make any moves. Very disappointing. Thank you.
Any other questions for the town manager? Okay. We can move on to item D, Veterans Agent Update.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know, I know there are folks here who've been waiting patiently for, for an update. Since Roddy's retirement, our, our part-time Vets Agent, we've been working closely with Rainham and the Massachusetts Office of Veterans Affairs on the possibility of creating a Veterans District. Vets, districts are recommended by the state, they, they're quite clear about that. And I think they're preferable for us, since the law does require a full, the law does require a full-time dedicated Veteran Service Officer for each town. If you, the incentive for towns to join a district is that you can jointly hire a full-time Vets Agent or Veteran Services Officer. Since our former Vets Officer predated the law that required a full-time person, he was able to continue to operate on a part-time basis. And I think as, as former Councilor Sousa pointed out, he did work far more hours than, than the part-time salary that he received, so we, we know that. But with, I think, with a full-time officer and full-time support staff, whatever the state requirement will be in that regard, I think we should be able to offer much better services at a reasonable cost to both Rainham taxpayers and Bridgewater taxpayers. So, so that conversation continues. I know the Rainham Board of Selectmen had hardly endorsed that concept last week, and we will, as I say, continue to have that conversation with them, and we will continue to, you know, accept the assistance of Veterans Affairs to make sure that whatever we formulate will, will be the best thing for the vets in both towns.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Michael, if I could, and I know you and I had a conversation about this earlier and, and before, but I just want to get some clarification, because I don't, I do think there are people here that want to hear a little bit more what you can divulge as far as what you're looking for, or what you're trying to work out with the town of Rainham. And first of all, in my judgment, I think we need our own full-time Veterans Agent in Bridgewater. That's just my opinion. I think we're a large enough town that a full-time Veterans Agent in this town, I think is needed. But having said that, if that doesn't happen, then that doesn't happen. But what, what kind of timeframe are you looking at, and what kind of staffing do you think would be required if a district is accepted by the state? And does this council have to adopt that district? Or, you know, how does this all work? Do you have that authority to just, you know, continue your discussions and?
That is a good question. Certainly have the authority and the obligation to continue the discussions, but if it requires council approval, certainly it'll come back to the council. I have not asked that question of Veterans Affairs yet. The staffing, we know that we would require a full-time Vets Agent, and also a full-time support staff, administrative assistant.
Okay. And currently, who's helping, who's helping us with the services veterans need?
So we have, we've, Veterans Area Veteran Services Officers have been very helpful. We have also been getting help directly from Veterans Affairs on, on a bunch of the recertifications, and our, our Accounts Payable Clerk has also been very helpful, as has the Senior Center Staff, Elder Affairs Staff. And we're trying, you know, obviously, we've had a gap, we're trying to get that gap eliminated, or that, that time gap finished, so that we can plow forward and get real dedicated service, qualified dedicated service to the vets. So it's, it's a high priority for us right now.
Right. Thank you.
Councilor Lindy?
Through you to the town manager. So thank you for some of the information that we got today. I also believe that we should have our own, but not having that, obviously Bridgewater and Rainham already have a school district together, so it, it makes sense. I, I understand that we've also had service from the East Bridgewater Veterans Agent helping us, and sometimes the three Bridgewater's make sense, too. If we did this, I understand it would be 20 hours a week in Rainham, 20 hours a week in Bridgewater. That, what worries me is if the person's in Rainham and they're dedicated to Rainham that particular day, what does the Bridgewater veteran have for services? Okay? And where would it be located? Right now, it's kind of buried in the Senior Center, and it's my understanding that younger veterans don't really want to go over to the Senior Center, and, you know, that's their, that's their prerogative. But, you know, I, I, I would have liked to know more before I kind of heard through the grapevine, through the Rainham Select Board Member at the MMA Conference about this. I, I asked for this, it ought to be on the agenda close to a month ago. And I, I, I just want to make sure that our veterans here in Bridgewater are being served. I've heard things like, all that person does is do those applications for a certain service. Then Frank Souza, our former counselor, just said, well, he did more outside of other office hours. We had a time limitation with him. He was retired, so he could only work so many hours. I get it. But, you know, I, I met the Veteran Service Officer in East Bridgewater, I think he's stellar, and, you know, now we'll be looking for a new, a new person. So just a little bit more information, if I could.
So I, I don't think, I don't think, so once you create a district, it's, the vets of the district are the ones that have access to Veteran Services Officer and the support staff and so forth. So, you know, the idea that, you know, we have talked informally about, you know, how, where would the office be? And we have, we are, we are not going to put the Veteran Service Officer back in the, in the Senior Center, so it likely will be situated here somewhere. Because I, I agree with you, I think that's, it's important for, for a number of reasons to, to have it in a, in a different location. And, and the reason it's there dates back probably 12 or 13 years, when, you know, this building was, parts of it were condemned, the town hall ceiling was falling in and so forth. So, so the, the whole town staff just scattered to wherever they could be. He ended up down at the Senior Center and, and has been there ever since, but that's not the optimum place to be. So that's, you know, we, we were looking to be able to, to provide the best service we can. We were looking at here, and I think Rainham has, has space in their town hall as well. But, but the Veteran Service Officer should be available to anybody within the district at any time, obviously within working hours, without regard to the town border. That, that's kind of the whole point, is, is the town border is sort of eliminated conceptually. So, so if it's convenient for vets in Rainham, then, then he'll be in Rainham, he or she, or he or she will be in Bridgewater if it's convenient. And so there's no, you know, there's no set, there's nothing set in stone yet, I guess that's the best way to put it.
Just to follow up real quick, is there any possibility at all of the Memorial Building?
Um.
Just thinking out loud.
There's, so honestly, in the, the Memorial Building, really, the way it's configured now, doesn't have a whole lot of private space. It would be a great opportunity, or a great place, obviously, but it's not, the private areas just really don't exist. There is no private area.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional? Councilor Robinson?
Yes, please. Thank you, through you to Mr. Dutton. I'm curious, I'm, I'm actually almost looking at this from maybe a different perspective around the district potential with Rainham. Is that due to the fact that the capacity needed may be possible to share that resource? Is that why, is that one of the reasons why you're looking at it? I, I ask that question just wondering, you know, because I, I'm hearing like, well, we should definitely have one full-time person here, but do we, is it needed, or, you know, I guess, yeah, I'm just wondering.
I mean, I think it, I think it, you know, certainly, that, the answer to that question is going to depend on, on who you ask, but, but I don't, I do see the need for full-time coverage. I look at the state, the state law that, that really does do everything it can to encourage the creation of districts. And if you look, I'm going to guess, although I, I didn't count, but I'm going to guess that well over half the cities and towns in the state are part of a, a district, a Vets District. So obviously, you know, I, I think, given the, given the, the vet populations in both towns, I think, you know, a consolidated or, or sort of a district or a regional approach in this case is, is really well warranted, and it gives consistent service, quality service. The other piece of it is much more related to recruitment. We want to create a position that's an attractive position for a really well-qualified candidate. What has happened historically, I think, in, in some towns is that, smaller towns, is that a Vets Agent will come in and not get paid very, very much.
Yeah.
And as soon as, you know, get some experience, then as soon as, as a greener pasture comes up somewhere else, they're out. And so it's, it's a bit of a revolving door in that respect. I don't think a revolving door really benefits our vets. I'd rather do something jointly and allow us to, to advertise a, a decent salary in order to retain a good person. I mean, I think that's what it's all about, is providing good service through a really quality Veteran Service Officer. So that's sort of the, the lens I look at it through.
Gotcha. Thank you. And then forgive my ignorance, is this role, like a field agent kind of role for Veterans Affairs, or like, what's the difference in terms of the services they're providing versus what Veterans Affairs does already? I just don't, I'm just not familiar with it.
Nope. That's a good question. Veterans Affairs, the State Office of Veterans Affairs doesn't, doesn't necessarily handle the local Chapter 115, you know, benefits. So a large part of the Veteran Service Officer's job is to, is to- Um, so a large part of the veteran service officer's job is to, is to secure, uh, benefits that veterans are entitled to. So that's, that's a local, um, that's a local, uh, obligation.
Okay.
Or, uh, job.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And there are other things as well. That's not the only thing, but.
Uh, Dr. Perry?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I believe I saw some recent information. I think the VA has some sort of formula for population of towns and districts being formed about requirements for number of agents and things like that. And I believe based on what I saw, that if we merged with Rainham, the population combined would require one full-time, uh, VA agent, one part-time VA agent, as well as a full-time, uh, staff member. Um, and again, if we stayed individual, we might still, we might just be needing one full-time and one, uh, staff member. Um, any thoughts on that situation, uh, what that would create?
So our conversations with Veterans Affairs have, uh, going through that calculation, they have told us pretty explicitly that we, we would require, I mean, you can always, you know, if the, if the, the, the demands of the job, um, or the department call for it, you can always hire additional. But, uh, the requirements that, that they spell out is one full-time veteran service officer and one full-time administrative position.
Okay. Any, uh, yeah, Councilor Gallagher, uh, follow up?
Um, I, I guess I'd, I'd like to try to keep this on the agenda for, until, I'd like to know if we have that, if we approve that. If we don't, you know, I mean, then, I mean, I'm sure you'll do the right thing for the town, but, but if you could find out whether we approve it in a timeline, I mean, I know, um, the current or the previous veterans agent has been, you know, down for a while. Um, I'd like to know a timeline as to what, when you feel as though this person or this district would be formed if approved and do we approve that? Do we have to sign off on that as a council? And then what the timeframe, timeframe is of advertising, interviewing, setting up the office and all that. I just, I'd like more of that.
Okay. Um, so maybe we'll add this as a, uh, agenda item for next meeting as well to get a specific answer. Yeah. Uh, follow up by Dr. Perry?
Yeah, just to follow up, uh, on that vein, can we hire someone now to fill the position even before potentially a, a regional system is created, just so we're not without the VA services that's needed? Uh, and then eventually merge it if we decide that we're going to do something with Rainham? But I'd like to know that answer as well.
Uh, we do have, we actually, right now, um, we're required to post according to the union requirements, we're required to post internally, that posting is up internally. Um, I don't, I don't think there, I think there's one person within that unit that's is qualified, um, and, but I, I suspect that, um, that they won't opt for, for that job. So, but, once it finishes, it's required, I think it's a 10-day posting period, then it goes out for public posting.
Thank you.
Uh, great. Just a final, maybe comment or question by me. I think we heard earlier that, um, it, it had traditionally been more than a part-time job. You said it was more than a part-time job. So when I heard the 2020 split, we've already said that's not enough, 20 hours aren't enough, right? So, um, I just want to make sure we take that into account so we know, you know, was it 40 hour, 30 hours a week, 40 hours a week, whatever the real thing is and base it on that. The second thing is, um, I appreciate the partnership with Rainham on a lot of things. Uh, it often is not a 50-50 split either in population or in funding and, and so, um, you know, as we're looking at that option, I would encourage us to consider, you know, 80% of the time is Bridgewater, 20% is Rainham, or whatever that population split. And then I really like the idea of, of using guidance, um, to, to kind of figure out the right answer for us. But it does seem to me that we wouldn't want to go lower than we had, which is what's implied by a 50-50 split, so. Um, okay. Uh, any additional questions? All right, thank you. Uh, moving on to item E, migrant housing crisis update?
Uh, on the migrant cri, uh, migrant housing crisis, um, obviously that's been the subject of a lot of discussion amongst my peer group and, uh, and certainly among residents in, all, all over the state, uh, and certainly, uh, state, uh, or local government boards. Um, generally, I can tell you that towns are not, uh, notified of the placement of migrant families within their communities. Uh, there's certainly no formal notification from the state and, and, uh, when it comes to my office or my peers, uh, we don't have, um, really any, uh, advance notice of, of the arrival. But I can tell you, um, that, uh, we do not, I'm not aware of any significant number of, of migrant families being housed in Bridgewater at this point. We do know that there are a fair number of migrant families being housed in, in Rainham, um, but, uh, but we, we don't know of any significant migrant, uh, families in Bridgewater. Um, we, uh, don't, also don't have a significant amount of municipal resources, uh, to devote to, um, the particular needs and, uh, and I think most of, of the needs of families in other cities and towns are, are largely coming from the state, uh, or being reimbursed by the state, albeit, um, very slowly. Um, we do, uh, know that there's job counseling available through other, uh, regional and, and state agencies, uh, for, for migrant families. Um, and certainly, you know, our health agent and our public health nurse are available for, um, for health-related issues, basic health-related issues that, that might pop up. But, but that's, um, really, I, you know, I hear scuttlebutt, um, which so far has turned out to be not accurate, um, but I'm not aware of any, any, um, any impact right now to Bridgewater of, of the migrant family, uh, migrant crisis. So, but happy to answer a question about that.
Thank you. Uh, any additional questions? Yep. Uh, Councilor Robinson?
Um, uh, maybe just a comment. I know I had shared in Councilor Comments recently that we were informed that 48 children came into the school district. So, but sounding like it's not causing a crisis here, but that we do have the presence. So, just wanted to reiterate, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, seeing no additional questions, uh, moving on to item F, sewer project update?
So I, I built this up, um, and I wanted to add this as an update to make you aware of the project costs on the sewer, uh, project, the two-phase sewer project, um, the projects, the, uh, costs overall have, have increased exponentially. Um, and we are trying to do whatever we can to make sure that we suppress or, uh, not have to raise sewer rates, uh, any more than absolutely necessary, uh, similar to what, what we had done with, with water. Um, so as you recall, we're, we're renovating our sewer plant, uh, to conform with DEP and EPA discharge requirements, uh, specifically for nitrogen and phosphorus. Those are the two, uh, big ones that the DEP and EPA have really ratcheted down. Um, so everything we're doing, all the construction we're doing is pursuant to those, uh, requirements, those discharge, uh, limits. So originally back in 2017, um, our cost estimate for the entire project, meaning both Phase 1 and Phase 2, for nitrogen, Phase 1 and, and phosphorus, Phase 2, uh, would be just over $31 million. So Phase 1, uh, which we had seen as the more costly of the two phases, came in at 44 million. Uh, that's just Phase 1. We received a zero-interest loan and principal forgiveness, which brings that borrowing down to 39 million. Um, and it'll, you know, that's all good news. We'll, we'll continue to, to work that, uh, down through, uh, additional principal forgiveness, uh, over the years. So, so that's good. However, uh, the new cost estimate for Phase 2, which is why I'm bringing this to you right now, uh, which, Phase 2, you have not, uh, yet appropriated, uh, or authorized borrowing, is now almost $57 million, um, 17 million of which is not revolving fund eligible. Um, so that makes the total of Phase 1 and Phase 2, uh, almost $100 million, uh, and that's triple, uh, over triple the original estimate from 2017. And quite frankly, that's way beyond, uh, our ratepayers' ability to pay. Um, so given that, I've instructed our engineers to go back, uh, to DEP and the EPA, um, to request another, what's referred to as an affordability analysis. Now, an affordability analysis determines, um, well, can determine a number of things. If, if you, um, if you go through an affordability analysis and it shows that the rates would have to raise so high that it would be unaffordable, um, a number of things can happen. The town can receive additional time to accomplish, uh, the project, so an additional number of years to accomplish, uh, whatever the piece, in this case, the phosphorus reduction, uh, or additional funding through the federal government, which would be great if the federal government wanted to pay $57 million. Um, or it can, uh, result in the delay of the enforcement of the new, uh, discharge permit. So, so we, uh, have asked the engineers to go back to both those agencies and say, we demand, uh, an affordability analysis because this would, uh, this would create rates that would probably be, quite frankly, probably be the highest in the state. Um, and given the service area, um, the, the residents within that service area, uh, cannot afford, um, those kinds of rates. So, so that's, um, that's where we are, uh, most immediate. Um, and just to give you a little bit of background, we did do an affordability analysis, uh, before starting Phase 1 and it did, and it was pursuant to the consent decree that we signed with both, um, DEP and EPA after, after we had sued them. But the affordability analysis we did prior to Phase 1 showed, um, that ratepayers would be paying an average of roughly 1.5 of their adjusted gross in, 1.5% of their adjusted gross income for sewer service. That fell within the, um, the acceptable range, EPA's acceptable range. So, so we did not get, uh, relief. Um, obviously now that those costs have ballooned, um, we think that an affordability analysis will show that, uh, that, yeah, the ratepayers cannot sustain or, or pay that kind of, uh, rate. So, so I just wanted to let you know, uh, that's what, that's what we're doing. Um, it's not the kind of thing you'll, you'll hear out on the streets necessarily, um, but I wanted to make sure that you were aware of it because, um, that's, you know, a sewer project in the $100 million range is, is, uh, something that Boston or even Cambridge might, uh, be able to undertake and sustain, but we, we can't, um, on the Bridgewater level. So roughly one-third of our town is, uh, is sewed. So if you figure, you know, about 10,000, uh, people, um, probably about 2,500, uh, units, something in that neighborhood, right off the top of my head, um, but, but they can't sustain rates, uh, that high. So, so I just want to let you know what our plan of action was, um, right now and I'll keep you updated on that as we go along. But happy to, always happy to answer questions about sewer.
Uh, any questions, the town manager? Uh, Dr. Perry?
Uh, thank you. Uh, so just on the current state of things, I know personally I, I just saw a sewer bill that came out that was a little bit larger than prior bills. Are, or should we be expecting some sort of, uh, rate increase to be seen in this last round of sewer bills because of this project?
Um, you will see, we have not, uh, changed rates yet, so you will see, uh, rate, um, rates, uh, permit fees, license fees and rates coming to you for approval. Um, that's part of what I'm talking about next, uh, is part of your budget process. Um, so yes, the, the rates will, will go up, uh, sewer rates will go up. Um, but, um, but obviously we, we can't and we're not going to propose rates that, that, um, you know, are accommodating that, that kind of sizable increase. So we'll, we'll propose rates and you'll vote rates, uh, that will cover the, the debt on the new Phase 1 piece, um, but, but not on the Phase 2. Because there's a lot, lot of, a long way to go before we, uh, initiate Phase 2.
Thank you. Yep. Thanks. Uh, maybe just a few questions. Is the university a paying customer for the sewer system?
It is. Yep, full-rate paying customer.
Do we know what percent of our sewer capacity is consumed by them?
Um, I did know, but I'd have to go back and look.
Okay. The reason I ask is, you know, I'm sure you're already doing it, but as one of those vehicles of investment, you know, certainly if we're supporting the university in a significant way, it'd be great to have their partnership on that.
Well, we've, uh, we have, I mean, obviously we've got a couple of things going on with the university. One is, um, you know, diverting sewage, but that's a long, long-term.
Yeah.
My definition, long-term, uh, project. More immediately, uh, D-CAM, who, who runs, uh, is responsible for the BSU, uh, facilities, um, needs to understand that we want a capital contribution, especially if we're going to be looking to pay anything even remotely close to that. Um, we need a capital contribution to offset the university's impact on, on the town. So we've, we've talked about that, uh, for quite a while now. Now it's a little more urgent.
Great, thanks. And then the second question is, um, knowing that we don't currently have an approved budget to support Phase 2, I guess, does the project stop until we find a solution? Does it continue and we're building debt and we, we're going to have to find somebody to pay for it? Just tactically, what does this information do to the project?
Uh, tactically, we are going to go back, as I said, to EPA and DEP and say, we have to do another affordability analysis because of the, the change in, the drastic change in the, uh, cost estimates. Um, and, uh, my tactic would be that we're not initiating or we're not starting the, the engineering for Phase 2 until that affordability analysis is done and we know what the results will be.
Thanks. And then just the last question. I do know, and I'm not suggesting that we do this, but I do know that other towns are dealing with wastewater issues. Yarmouth, for example, is requiring everybody to connect to sewer, more for environmental reasons than this, but, um, in addition to understanding whether or not there are different ways to fund our approach, it would be good to know what are the other approaches sort of on the menu, um, that, you know, might kind of help us manage our way out of this challenge. Um, I don't know if you know them off the top of your head, but in the future, it would be good to just kind of know what the options are.
No, I can, I can certainly present the options, um, when the time comes.
Great, thanks. Uh, Councilor Lindy?
I don't have a question, but Fred has his hand raised.
Oh, great.
So I'm not sure if you.
Thanks for pointing that out. Fred, my apologies. Uh, we have Councilor Chase, uh, through Zoom that has a question.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President. And, uh, if I may, through you, uh, to the town manager, just a follow-up question with respect to, um, uh, the matter of sewage. I, I know that our recently adopted, uh, flow-neutral, uh, regulations did help us to achieve, uh, beneficial results with respect to, uh, the loan obligations that were required. Uh, i- is there any similar opportunity for us to, um, you know, amend regulations that might have a beneficial, further beneficial effect with respect to Phase 2? Or is Phase 2 really, uh, just intended to, uh, deal with the phosphorus issue and it's really not something we would have any ability to mitigate, uh, the cost of?
Uh, it is, I think, the latter. I think it's, uh, it's, um, it's, uh, Phase 2 is really a requirement of the consent decree, um, and it's, it's, it's actually not dissimilar, the, the, uh, discharge limits that, that the permit is requiring are not dissimilar to, to other, uh, cities and towns along the Taunton River, or the town, excuse me, the Town River. Um, but I think, uh, as it pertains to Bridgewater, um, as I say, the cost has just exploded. So, um, so I don't think there's anything particularly within, uh, regulation, town regulation that we can amend that would, um, uh, do anything to affect, um, the cost estimate certainly. Um, and ironically, one of the things that would benefit us is to bring everybody onto the system, um, but we can't do that, uh, because we don't have the capacity for that. Um, but if, if you had more participants in the system, you'd spread the cost, obviously. Um, but we're, we're sort of a little bit between a rock and a hard place in that regard.
So, uh, then if I understand, there have been discussions, at least some consideration to, uh, discussions with, uh, Department of Correction with respect to, uh, making use of some of their unused capacity. And so if, if, if that were to be. And so if, if, if that were to be given effect, and we therefore had additional, the ability for additional discharge above and beyond what our system can handle, would we then actually be in a better position to increase town sewage for all residents?
We would, because diverting that capacity would, would free up capacity in our own plant, so we could, we could offer sewer, or require sewer tie-in for, for greater, greater pieces of the town. One of the things that, that is determined when you do a comprehensive wastewater management plan is, is what areas of your town are the needs areas. So we've got probably three or four general areas that are needs areas. They're all residential, as far as I can remember, and those would have priority. In fact, we would probably be required to tie, tie those areas in. But doing that really doesn't, doesn't help us mitigate the cost because if we lose one, one big ratepayer and add in a lot of smaller ratepayers to make up for that, we're not really generating the additional revenue that would be required to be able to support a borrowing of, of upwards of $100 million.
I see. All right, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Chase. Any additional questions on this one? So a request, maybe if we could just keep this as a standing item with an update, that would also be appreciated. And then the last item, Item G, FY23 Budget and Capital, sorry, FY25 Budget and Capital Calendar.
All right. I just, I thought I would share with the council the, the calendar. This is essentially our, our internal calendar that we try to adhere to as best we can. Whoops, hold on. So I just give you a sense that I don't want you to think, because I haven't spoken about it, that we haven't been working on the FY25 budget. We have, obviously, the council's budget resolution was, was presented and was discussed and was passed, and coming up on February 1st, you'll see my preliminary budget, which is really just a sources and uses document that guesstimates, for the most part, where our revenues will be, and, and, I shouldn't say guesstimate, but it's not, it's not fine-tuned where our revenues will be. So we will, you will see that, you'll see my budget message, preliminary budget messages accompanying that on February 1st. Before that, we've got a kickoff of budget work for the department heads, and if you follow budgets in other towns, they probably are a little bit ahead. We don't drag out our budget process internally because our department heads have plenty of work to do other than strictly trying to crunch numbers. So just as, as an aside, we, we give the depart, the departments all of their, all of their staffing numbers so that they don't have to plug in any salary. That's a hu, most of, like 90% of town budget goes to people, so we do that, and so they don't have to crunch those numbers and figure out what step, what step somebody's going to be on, what, what grade they're in, and so forth. So we, we do that through, through our finance department, and that is shared with them so that they really just have to develop their work plan for the fiscal year and make sure that their staffing can accommodate that work plan, and then any additional small equipment items or supplies, they've, they've got to deal with. So, so the kickoff with the department heads will be this week, and, and that will start an accelerated process on both the capital. They've already contrib, they've already submitted their capital requests, but we'll finalize those as well as their budgets over the next month and a half or so. So, so we will have, we've got some preliminary indications where our new growth numbers will be significantly lower than they have been over the past few fiscal years. In fact, we're looking at a lot of our local receipts down significantly in FY25 than where they, they've been historically over the past few years. We've had a few years of really good local receipts and, and new growth. We're seeing a lot of softening in those numbers, even in the current fiscal year. Then for counselors that, that aren't aware, I'm required by charter to, to submit the budget to you on April 1st, which I will do, and after that, it will get referred, standard practice is to have it referred to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, and then also the Finance Committee for Review, and those two committees can decide if they're going to have joint meetings to go over budgets. I think last year, we did not do that, the prior year, I think we did, but that's a committee, that's a committee decision, and we tentatively are targeting May 7th for a council budget hearing and potential vote on, on the budgets. So we also have plugged in the, as we do every year, whoops, we've plugged in the Bridgewater-Ranham calendar so that we can make sure that it merges with our progress as we go along. So, so they generally adopt and, and, well, adopt a budget sometime the end of March, and then it has to be certified by the end of April, and then they prepare, then they're prepared for our, our potential vote in, in May, and then also the Ranham Town Meeting a little bit later in May. So, so that's, I just wanted to kind of give you a glance at the calendar. There's no, no council action needed on this. It's just an FYI so that you know what's coming up, and you know that we are actually working on the budgets.
Yeah, Counselor George?
Sure, through you to the town manager. Mr. Dutton, I don't believe we have an April 15th meeting, I think we have an April 23rd meeting. I think we have the 9th and the 23rd for April.
Okay, I'll take a look.
I've got it right up here in front of us. Just, just so the, the dates are correct.
Excellent, thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Very minor request. Can we get this sheet and your presentation from earlier emailed to us?
Sure.
Thanks.
And then an additional request for me. I think with the economy and inflation, inflation and kind of being where it is, it would also be great to get a little bit of like a ride-along sheet with the estimating assumptions around the budget, you know, sort of, I guess, sort of which version of the economy are we anticipating? And just so we're, you know, kind of go into that eyes open.
So that, that's, I can bring that to the council. That's something that we usually sit down with the Finance Committee and the Budget and Finance and really go through the revenue figures, but I'm happy to bring that kind of information right to the council.
Okay, I think that would be great, and even, you know, for some of these projects where the price potentially has gone up, or maybe we think it might go down, would just be good to have some visibility to that. Thank you. That concludes the town manager's update. We did get a few requests sort of live for the next update. I also did get a request from Counselor McKinnon to add a Carver Well Restoration Project update in the next one, if we could, and I'd actually ask the counselors if they'd like to add additional updates. Yep, Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, I have two requests, just a fire station update if it's not already on there for the next meeting, and then also wondering if we could get some statistics around the new C Clicks Fix website to see if there's what the usage has been in response rate from the town on those. If you agree.
Great. Thank you. Any additional requests for the next update? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Item J, Discussions. We have none this evening. Item K, Committee Reports. Do we have anyone from a committee that would like to share an update? I see none. Moving on, Legislation for Action, we have none. M, Old Business, we have none. N, New Business. We have three this evening. The first is Order OFY24022, Acceptance of Gift. The headline here is Town of Bridgewater Shall Receive a Gift of $40,000 of Equity and Property from Joseph Bonfiglioli and Anthony Bonfiglioli. I would entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call vote?
Counselor Lindy?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor George?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
And Counselor Chase?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Moving on to Item B, Order OFY24023, Acceptance of Donation, Oliari Charitable Foundation. The Town of Bridgewater has received a donation award from the Oliari Charitable Foundation for $20,000 to be split evenly between the Bridgewater Police and Fire Department. I would entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, could we do a roll call vote?
Counselor Chase?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor George?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
And Counselor Lindy?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, and thank you to the donors. Item C, Order OFY24024, Vote to Authorize the Town Council President and Town Council Vice President to Sign on Behalf of the Town of Bridgewater. I would refer to the town manager for an overview.
This is pretty pro forma. It's, the voter, the vote authorization that you had voted back when the, this pertains, obviously, to the Mass Historic and their contribution towards the town hall roof. So all it is, is voting to allow the council president, the current council president and the current council vice president to sign on behalf of the Town of Bridgewater. They had, I think, Matt and Eric, Matt Rushton and Eric Moore listed, and now they need to get a vote to authorize the current president and vice president.
So this is just a sort of a document-keeping update?
Pro forma, yep.
Does this, can we vote? Can we action this tonight, or this is a vote to-
Unfortunately, the town attorney is telling me that no.
As I'm seeing a note, okay, so-
I would say yes.
I would entertain a motion to keep this at council for approval or for a vote in the next meeting.
Second.
Second for discussion?
Yep.
I got the second.
You can have the discussion, though, if you'd like.
Look, I got to shake it up a little.
Counselor George, any discussion?
So through you to either the town attorney or town manager, so looking at the, and this is just, I think, cleanup stuff, Preservation Restriction Agreement, it's got Matt Rushton as president, so obviously that's going to need to change to Eric.
Oh, correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So when it comes back to us, that, that change will be made?
Yes.
Okay. That, that was, I was just looking through everything else, looks like.
And the doc, the document originates with Mass Historic, so, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so you can sign it. Great, thank you. Any additional discussion or questions?
Oh, God.
Okay, seeing none. I would entertain, oh, we already did the motion and the second, we can move to a roll call vote, and again, we're voting to keep this at council for a vote next time.
Counselor Lindy?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor George?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
And Counselor Chase?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, the motion passes, we'll bring it back to the next meeting. That concludes New Business. Moving on to Item O, Citizen Comments. Would anyone from the public like to approach? Yep.
Frank Souza, 596 Main Street. Earlier, I spoke about the previous vets agent working beyond his part-time hours, and our town manager agreed with me, and then the conversation here today continues with hiring a part-time vets agent. If the vet's agent who was in that position for a number of years was unable to do the job within those hours, how could we expect a new vets agent to step in when our councilman right there said some of the veterans wouldn't even go to the senior center to deal with the vets agent? So if it was a new location, there may be even more veterans looking for help. So how can you do it with a part-time vet agent?
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else from the public care to speak?
Hey, everyone. Kevin Marshall, 780 Auburn Street, Bridgewater resident, veteran. I sent you all an email earlier today. To those who read it, thank you very much. To those who didn't, please do. The subject was veterans agent, should be real simple for y'all. I've already requested an updated staffing chart that was in that email, is what I had, says that a district between Ranham and Bridgewater would require a full-time agent, a part-time agent, and one clerk. This, the chart that I had might be outdated, I've already requested a new one. I do have a question, and I know you can't answer questions, but what I'd like to ask is, in that staffing, the office clerk, would that be a new hire dedicated to that office, or would that be in a, just assigning extra duties to a current employee? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll follow up to the email with an answer on that. Would anyone else from the public care to speak?
Wayne Louyama, I live on Calvert Drive. I was a National Guard captain, and I commanded twice, so I know how to take care of troops. The limit on the full-time and a part-time veteran service officer is 14,000 population. Below that is a part-timer, above that is a full-timer, period. It's been like that since 1977. It's going to be, what, another five months before we get a part-timer on? It's been almost a whole year since nobody's been in that seat. What are we going to do? The past VSO was a full-time, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm nervous as hell and I've got PTSD and I got, I'm 87 years old.
No worries at all, take your time.
I know how to, it just ticks me off the way we've been treating veterans in this town for the past 15 years. I complained one time at the end of a VFW meeting, after the meeting was over, I'm saying I was going to take the town and embarrass the town. Well, guess what? Roddy Walsh found out about it, and he called the cops on me. And it happened twice. And I'm pissed about that, believe it or not. I'm so damaged, my wife says, "Cool down here." To let you know about my experience, I had to throw, as a commander on active duty, I had to throw two people into jail. One pulled a knife on a senior NCO, and the other went AWOL twice. I had to go to talk to a three-star general about pre-trial confinement. But the next one was, I took care of a soldier's young son, because I know how this works. You've got to be, you've got to be a priest, and you've got to be everything else to an list, list man. But we went on a shot, and next stayed over because Fort Benning didn't have a large enough artillery range. We have 18 guns down there in New Bedford. And coming back, my first agent caught one of our soldiers who lived off posts in bed with another guy. He beat the hell out of the, out of the guy. The wife went home, but in the meantime, the soldier had to go back in the barracks, but he can't bring his three-year-old son. So my wife and I took care of that three-year-old until his grandmother come up to pick him up. So I know what it is to take care of soldiers, and Bridgewater did a lousy job. He was a life member in the American Legion, and a life member of the VFW. How many times, anybody going to ask me how many meetings he came to to see the pulse of veterans in the area? Zero. Case closed. Make a decision.
Thank you. Would anyone else- Would anyone else from the public care to speak?
Hello, my name is Jean Katus, 23, Tony, terrorist in Bridgewater. I'm a recent widow of a Army combat veteran. My husband served for 21 years and went to combat from 2003 to 2004. When he unexpectedly passed away in August, I was devastated, and there's no handbook, there's no guidelines, where do you go, what do you turn to? And then I reached out to the VSO in Bridgewater three times for some guidance, for some help, for just a direction to head, because I was lost, and I have a family and a house, and I didn't know where to turn, and nobody ever, ever returned my phone call. So I took it upon myself to do the, my own footwork, and reached out to another veteran, and he guided me to Boston. But why should I have had to gone to Boston when the services are right here in my own town that I've been here for 19 years? And after, you know, reaching out to find my guidance and where to go, I'm thinking of all these other families who don't know, like, what happens? Even if your spouse or whoever hasn't passed away, and you need a question answered, and nobody is there for you to answer them. So not only have these veterans earned the right for help, their families have also earned the right, because if they have went to war, your families have went to war. We've all been there, even though we physically have not been there, we've mentally been there with all of them. And when we're looking for some answers to questions, we need someone to answer them, and not a part-time person, a full-time person. And not that they're gonna be in Rainham this time, oh, so if you're in Rainham, I can't call you and ask you a question. So I just, for, you know, I understand that the veterans and their family greatly outweighs the staff for services, but a lot of us do need help, and it's hard to find it, and I just think our veterans deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to speak? Okay. I'll now close Citizen Comments, and we'll move on to Council Comments, starting on Zoom with Counselor Chase. Do you have any comments this evening?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. No, I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Chase. We'll start around this side. Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the veterans that showed up tonight, and the people that showed up tonight to advocate for that position. The emails that we received, I think the information was informative. I think it's powerful to hear you all talk about your experiences. The proposal of the district is not something that I'm in favor of, and it sounds like majority of my counselors are also not in favor of it, and so I think we better start thinking about some alternatives to that together as a group, whether that's in a meeting, meeting separately with the town manager. But I think some action needs to be taken. I think people have spoken. I think people will continue to speak. So again, thank you all for your service. Thank you for showing up tonight, and I hope we can come to a resolution on that.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor George?
Thank you, Mr. President. So just a couple things to reiterate what Counselor Murphy said. I think the reevaluation, the restaffing, the reallocation of resources for veterans in Bridgewater is long overdue. We've heard about this for a long time, and we're probably very remiss in not making the necessary changes, but we have the opportunity now to do it, and I think we need to make sure that we do this in a complete way, you know, for both towns as well. I know Rainham needs help as well, but this council, you know, needs to focus on Bridgewater, which we do, so I think we've got the opportunity to do that right, right now. So, and thank you for everyone that's spoken. I just want to say on the upcoming budget discussions, this is probably gonna be one that this town has not seen in quite some time, because of the economic factors that have been going on. We've had some good economies, we've had some good state aid. If anyone is watching the news, you know, the governor's already laying down the groundwork for potential cuts in state aid, you know, things of that nature. So this is going to be a time for the town to buckle down, because we still have a lot of priorities that need to get addressed. One that will always be in front of me right now, in front of everyone, is we need major road and sidewalk work. We are just not gonna get the funding from the state in order to be able to do that holistically. We do have the resources in regards to reports to show priority of streets. I'm a firm believer that we're gonna have to fix those streets within our current operational budget, as well as leveraging reserves. And if that means that, you know, we have departments that, you know, can't get additional equipment, staffing, things of that nature, to move forward on those, then unfortunately, we're probably looking at that on a go-forward basis. So as much as I expect the town manager to tell the department heads to buckle down, the residents of Bridgewater are gonna also have to understand, too, that if we do buckle down, we may not be able to see the level of support in certain areas, but at the end of the day, it becomes economics and priorities. And anyone who's been in this town for a year, or 20 years, or 50 years, knows that, you know, our streets, our sidewalks, even sewer and water in regards to infrastructure need work. We're gonna have to come up with a way to pay for it, and again, we'll have to look at it probably from a long-term perspective of, streets that need to get work may not get work for a while, but we just can't jump around and fix things we can afford while allowing things that need major work to go by the wayside. And we've got immediate needs from there as well. So, you know, the council, the Budget and Finance, the Finance Committee, the department heads, the town manager, you know, we always go into the budget season, kind of trying to figure it out, but I think from this perspective, everyone needs to understand what we're looking at in regards to projections, and what we need are probably gonna be some tough times over the next three to five years. I just want to put that down. So, and my final announcement, which probably, you know, comes across from there, is I've decided I will not be running for reelection for the town council. I've served eight years. Hopefully, I've made a difference, but I think personally, it's time for new people to come in with new ideas, new approaches. They may have the exact opposite of what I just said about the budget, but that's okay. But hopefully, we do have a robust ballot of people that do want to step up, get involved, make a difference, and if anyone wants, you know, any information from me, advice, whatever the case may be, please, you know, don't hesitate to reach out. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor George. Counselor Lindy?
Thank you. I am glad I'm not last. So I just want to thank Counselor George for his great service, and also Counselor Moore, who's also announced that he's not gonna run. I know you're gonna probably say it again, but you guys have brought a lot to the council, and I've learned a lot from both of you, actually. I was happy to learn more this weekend at the Mass Municipal Association Conference. There were some good sessions, some good seminars. The governor was talking about less cuts, less aid, but ambitious programs that she wants to fund, and I don't know where she's gonna get the money to fund them and then cut other things. Back to local, we have three budgets that are always kind of the lowest budgets. One of them is veterans, one of them is libraries, the other seniors, all people that have given to us. I think we hear all the veterans loud and clear about what they want for the Town of Bridgewater, and I also want that as well. I'm supportive of veterans. My dad was a veteran. I did not have the privilege to serve, but he was a proud U.S. Army veteran, and there isn't a veterans' event that I miss. I don't go to the meetings only because I'm not a member, but I might be an auxiliary member soon. Been asked a couple of times, but I think that's why I asked the question a couple, you know, about a month ago. I want to get that situation handled. I think it's a good idea that Dr. Perry brought forth to make sure we have someone in place now and utilize the other agents that we're currently utilizing. So let's keep it on the agenda, let's keep it up, and let's not disappoint any further. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lindy. Counselor, or Dr. Perry?
Thank you very much. Again, thank you to the veterans, veterans' families that came out here tonight. We hear you loud and clear, and again, it's a priority for me to see a full-time veterans' agent in place as soon as possible. We need it, it's important. There's no getting around it, whether we partner with Rainham or not, that's not the priority, the priority is our town right now. So we'll see what we can get done as soon as possible, and I hope we get someone in place very soon. Secondly, I just want to go back and congratulate, and the people who stepped up for the Veterans' Council, Jonathan Aldrin and Lisa Bazell Curley, thank you for stepping up in your service there. And also want to congratulate firefighter David McGillis on his retirements. I had the privilege of making his retirement party at the firehouse the other day and presented him the proclamation from the town council. So it was well-received. He's dedicated his career to the town, and I thank him for his service, and wish him a happy retirement. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Perry. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I'm gonna echo it, because it's deserved as well. Thank you to the veterans who've served and who've also shown up to voice your feelings and your actual very personal experiences as well. Thank you for sharing that with us. Even though my father is a veteran, I am not as obviously knowledgeable about the way some of these services are structured and who does what, so I appreciate your part in helping to educate me. And we'll certainly, I'll certainly be eager to learn more and see where things net out. I think that's it mostly for me, so thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Robinson. Counselor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things tonight. I do want to talk a little bit about the Mass Municipal Conference that I and a few of my colleagues were able to attend last Friday and Saturday morning. What I heard out of that Saturday, or Friday morning, from the Healy-Driscoll administration is that 3% increase in unrestricted local aid would be coming to the towns, or the, and 4% was gonna be increased for Chapter 70 monies. That's what I heard at the, at the governor's address to the municipal leaders. At the same time, she, she and Governor Driscoll are also going to file the Municipal Empowerment Act, which will give towns, municipalities more tools in their toolbox upon local acceptance to provide some sort of tax relief as far as excise tax goes, and as far as senior, senior tax credits go towards their, towards their bill. But that's just a, an empowerment act that's gonna be filed with the legislature. In addition, there's a $400 million-plus bill that will be filed regarding roads and bridges, additional above Chapter 70 monies to help towns with that effort. And I know when you talk about 351 cities and towns and $400 million, you know, the math for what we need isn't, isn't that great. But the budget writers at the State House have earmarked a 2% increase in local, in state receipts for fiscal '25, and yet their commitment is 3% in unrestricted local aid and 4% for Chapter 70 monies. Now, this is just a proposal. Obviously, House One goes through the meat grinder of the budget process on Beacon Hill, and we don't know what that will come out with. But as we all are aware, I think things have kind of slowed down as far as revenue goes with the state. The governor also has recently imposed some nine-seat cuts to other agencies, but not local government. So as we move forward with the budget process here in the Town of Bridgewater, which, which will begin with our, our local receipts estimate from the town, town financial team, this, we've had some good times, we've had some fairly easy budgets over the last several years, but I think now, you know, things, things are gonna get a lot tighter, as Counselor George has said and the town manager alluded to. So I think that it's cooperation, it's working together, and hopefully get through the, get through the process. I also want to thank the veterans that came out today and the emails we received about this. I am a veteran, and although I have never needed or received any, any benefits that were needed, I understand the need to have a strong veterans' agent in our community, because I have directed many people in the past to our veterans' agent or other agencies if they weren't able to help. So as, as we move forward and get more information from the town manager in a couple of weeks, I really hope that whatever plan is put before us is something that the townspeople and the veterans will be happy with and be able to, to have the access, easy access, to questions and answers that do affect the lives of the veterans and their families, too. It's not just about the veteran, it's the families if they're, if they're passed. I do remember several years ago, as a selectman, I did hire Roddy Walsh with, with the rest of the board, but I know times have changed and the needs have changed, and the time for a full-time veterans' agent, and more outreach, too. It's not just, just about the benefits that are needed, it's outreach in other areas that a veteran might need, that that person needs to be in place to be able to do more of that. So hopefully, we'll have this resolved soon, because I don't really want to see a long-term vacancy in that position, but as the town manager has told us, there are other towns that are, have stepped in to help us during that process. And finally, I also want to, want to say it is, it is my intention, too, not to seek reelection in April. I am, I hope that others step up to the plate and pull papers and run for office for council and other seats in the town. I know some have already stepped up to the plate, and I think that there are some great people in our community that would make good counselors, and I know there are many people that currently serve on boards and committees that have been there for a while that I think would make good counselors. So I am gonna take a step back for a while. I have some things going on that I'm gonna need to take care of, or other opportunities may come down the road for me, but I do not plan to run for reelection this April. And that is it for tonight. Thank you.
Sorry, can I add one more thing?
Sure.
I'm gonna take it not personally that y'all are leaving this row here, but in all seriousness, to the three of you who are departing, thank you very, very much for what you've imparted on us and shared, and I echo the sentiment of, I've learned a ton, I've appreciated the camaraderie, too, so.
The three more months.
Wish you the best. Yeah.
I know, true.
Six more meetings now.
Who's counting?
I appreciate the words. Thank you. So I will, I'll take us home. I'd also like to echo what everyone else has said. I truly appreciate the veterans sharing your, your stories with us, you know, speaking on behalf of a full-time agent. I also think that that's important. I think it is a priority for the town, and I think in the past, we've tried to even put some special ordinances in place to the benefit of the veterans in the town, and so I truly hope that we continue to, to lead in that space. I do know that it's very difficult to stand up in front of a room and share those stories, and so, you know, I, I just appreciate the, just the personal attention to really fight for the things that are important for you. This is one of them. I would, yep. Yes, please.
We talked over the VFW, and I've been a commander twice, Elliot. That we're in favor of this district, because we think that it's gonna cover a lot more.
Yeah, thank you. So actually, building on that, and then we can connect maybe right after, but I was gonna say, I do think it's a good idea to not have this decision just sort of be us weighing in on things we have heard, but to actually involve the veterans' community in crafting, you know, a recommendation for the council. I think that that is a good idea, and even after this meeting, we can continue the conversation. As others have said and, and mentioned, I did put on Facebook that I am not intending, I'm not seeking reelection. For me, it's a bit of a pause. You know, there can be points in your life when you have a lot of competing priorities. For me, this is one. Uh, for me, this is one, uh, but supporting the town is a priority as well. And as others have said, uh, I think when I talk to people, they assume that there is some special training that all of us have gotten, and, you know, once you go through the official training, you can then run for council, and it's not that at all. You know, uh, the council is intended to be people in our neighborhoods that take time out to support the town. And there's no special training for people that care, so. If you show up, the rest of the stuff we learn, we have a town manager that teaches us some things, uh, we have a town council clerk that advises us and helps us, we have peers, two incredible peers here that, uh, helped me onboard, a third as well. And, you know, I learned sort of how it works from the people sitting next to me. You still have your own opinions, you decide, you know, what you wanna do with the information, but, uh, but you're not alone, kind of up here. And so if anyone is considering running, I do encourage you to take up Counselor George, myself, Counselor Gallagher, on our offers to talk to you about what the role involves. We're all happy to sort of explain it. And I do encourage you to sort of throw your hat in the ring and find a way to, to help the town. Help the town make some very difficult decisions when you've got all these priorities and a much smaller budget to support them. And then the last thing I would say is, you know, kind of on the skills, uh, it doesn't take special skills, but I would encourage you, if you do decide to come into the seat, uh, you know, find ways to have an open mind about the information you're hearing. You often hear very different perspectives about the same issue, and it takes some time to do some research to kind of figure out what your own perspective will be based on the facts you hear. And, um, so I would say that is sort of the one, the one piece, uh, you know, come into the role expecting to learn, and not, don't necessarily come into the role thinking you have all the answers and you're ready to, you know, kind of act on them. But with that, um, I think we can move ahead, uh, to item Q, executive session we have done tonight. Uh, item R, adjourning. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion and a second, uh, roll call, vote?
And I'm mad at all three of yous. Counselor Chase?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor George?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
And Counselor Lindy?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thanks.